Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, spending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel ten seventy-two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of the evening is to establish a quorum. Select Board Member Nick Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Matters is present. Just going to give you a quick rundown of tonight's agenda. We'll start off with approval of minutes for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, then we will go into public announcements and agenda item request. Item three will be Chatham Wells' update for the PFAS and drinking water testing and pumping updates from our DPW Director, Rob Failey. Then we will go into our regular business agenda. I'm going to allow public comments basically on, basically is the run, our business agenda tonight. Item A, Article forty-seven was indefinitely postponed last evening, so we will not be taking up discussion on that tonight. Item B, considered use of town property for the third annual fireworks spectacular on Tuesday, July second at Veterans Field will be our second, our first item. Our second item will be the shellfish seasonal closures. And the last item will be acceptance of grant award to the Town of Chatham for an Adult Supportive Day program. That item, I'm going to allow public comment during the agenda item. So it's a relatively short agenda this evening, but Item D, public comments will be allowed during the item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On, back to Item A.
Yes.
Is that meant to be exclusively related only to Article forty-seven, or was it meant to be a general follow-up on last night?
I think as printed.
At first read it, I thought it was just the form, but now I'm thinking it's more general.
If the board is fine with going, I've been welcome to do some general comment, but we do, Article forty-seven was definitely postponed, so that specifically, we're not going to discuss. If you just want to have a general, kind of a recap of last night, we have plenty of time this evening, so.
I, I, I read it the way Dean read it, but now as I look at it, it says follow-up items, and there's Item One. I, to have that conversation, I would sort of like to have that score sheet that identifies what the votes were on each of the items, articles, before we have that conversation. I'm not standing in the doorway, but that would be my preference.
We'll recap that. It's, I read this originally as, as, you know, a heading for review and discussion with Article forty-seven. It's a specific bullet item. That's how I originally read it.
So, Corey, why don't we just postpone it and talk about it next week? That way everybody can.
We can do the scorecards, and we can have a full discussion. Fine. No, not a problem whatsoever. All right. So, we're going to kick off the night with approval of minutes for April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those edits, commissions, Mike?
I have two comments, which I just want to, for the record, note. First on page seven, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, the last sentence of that paragraph says, "It was stated that the public would be able to have their say on the proposals before a final decision was made." And I have communicated with Kathy, who tells me that statement is in, in, in the tape, but I, I do want to note that there may be ways to, to interpret that as a correct statement, but I think to the normal reader, that, that may convey a message that is not exactly accurate. It's my understanding that, and I think she said that last night, that the town manager did share a press release or a statement of process with the Chronicle, which outlines the process for exactly when the proposals will be made public in conjunction with the decision-making. My understanding is the decision, at least presently, is slated for June eleventh, and the, the proposals will be in that, in the, in the packet for that, that joint meeting of the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Board.
Dean?
Just a couple. Maybe Mike cut these. I don't remember. I don't know. Page two, there's a motion that Mr. Shell made, but it's not specified. On the B, one B. And then on page five, again, these are just typos. One, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, third line, right in the middle, the word concerns. I think it should be concerning. And then dropping down to the second to last paragraph from the, toward the bottom, last line, public, everyone accesses the public, I think it mean, I think we mean to say waterways. And then on page thirteen, just for clarity, third paragraph, second sentence, construction, I would just insert, at, at the Eldridge Garage property, will be done. And then similar correction on the bottom, just before the phrase, the sentence which reads, "The board took no action at this time." The paragraph above that, in the first line, "It was stated that there will be two level two charges," I would insert, "it was stated that at the Eldridge Garage." There will be. Okay.
Mike?
Sorry, I, I, I had one other, which is also for the record. Kathy's informing me the statement was made. On page eleven, the first full paragraph where it says, "The RFPs were written based on a public engagement process that lasted six to nine months." I, I actually do sort of remember that statement. The fact is, the process started in December of two thousand twenty-two and ended in February of two thousand twenty-four, which is more like fourteen or fifteen months. So, for the record, I just note that. I don't propose to change the minutes. The minutes are the minutes. And then back to Dean's suggestion on page, was it seven?
I was on page five.
If, I'll, I'll, I had a comment on that. I'll defer to his suggestion, but I'd like to add, so that it says concerning only areas of general policy, insert the word "and", not an individual's financial interest.
Yeah, okay.
I got a couple.
Go ahead, Jeff.
H eight, first paragraph. At the end of the first paragraph, there's a sentence, I just don't know where it's going. It starts, "We have to wait to see what the developers are going to, what the developers are going to any board involved in that decision-making process." What F, the option to go into that executive session. I just had no idea what that sentence means. "We have to wait to see what the developers are going to, what? To any board involved."
To propose.
To propose, or whatever. So, anyway, that's, we have to fill in a verb there. So, what they're going to propose to any board involved, I guess, is probably a good one. And then just a knit on page eleven, the paragraph that starts, "Mr. Shell made a motion to delegate project development oversight." Just, it's lacking a "to." That's it.
Okay. Additional edits? All those in favor? Select Board Member Nick Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Matters says aye. Next is public announcements and agenda item requests. I will start with the board. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to renew a request that I made, and I don't want to be presumptuous because we have an election on Thursday, but this had to do with the Council on Aging, the Center for, for adult living, sorry.
Active living.
Active living. Sorry, thank you.
CFAL.
CFAL, CFAL. That I'd like to have a public forum to review the feasibility study that was done by Mr. Rayber, wherein he responds to questions or concerns that were raised at the previous forum, which I understand he was going to be working on. And I would suggest that rather than carve out a separate meeting day, it could be done as part of a regular board meeting. And I would suggest that it could be done on June twenty-fifth, later, later in June. That would be my, my suggestion to, to the board. Okay? Or the chair, whoever's the chair. Thank you.
Any additional?
Just another reminder on the Keku Park, the gazebo there. I just want to make sure the electricity is up to snuff and the lighting is up to snuff before we start our band concert season. It's imminent, and I just want to make sure it gets done. Thanks.
Tree.
I just want to remind everybody to go vote on Thursday.
Vote early, vote often.
I thought that came from Chicago.
Nineteen sixty. All right. I believe our, Police Chief, Chief Anderson has a announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am the staff liaison to the Public Ceremonies Committee, and on behalf of Chairman Rob Franz, who could not be here tonight, I would like to extend this invitation to our community. Come out and celebrate our annual Memorial Day ceremony. That will be Monday, May twenty-seventh, at ten a.m. It'll be held on the front lawn of the community center, right next to the World War One memorial. In case the weather does not cooperate, it'll be moved inside to the community center gymnasium. Again, start time, ten o'clock. Plenty of free parking. And just a reminder to the members of the community that the Public Ceremonies Committee is still actively seeking new members. There are vacancies on that committee, and I believe Mr. Franz will be here in front of you, trying to recruit at the next meeting, again, interested members. You don't have to be ex-military. You just have to be someone who cares a lot for those who serve, like I do. And if you are interested, members of the public, in applying, you can find the link on the town website, on the town webpage for the Public Ceremonies Committee. But again, just again, Monday, May twenty-seventh, ten a.m., and we just hope that the community can out, can come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public announcements from the in-house audience tonight? Is there anyone online with a public announcement or agenda item request?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gibbs has a comment.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, based on the conversation earlier, when the minutes were being revised, I think we need an agenda item request, or an agenda item to discuss changing minutes based on what was actually said. I mean, if it was said, it should be in the minutes. When the public is watching these meetings, they are relying on what the Board of Selectmen say. So, to change it after the fact, that's our only record. So, you know, we have to rely on, on what you're saying, and if you change it, it's as if it was never said, and that's not the case. So, I think, again, it's a transparency issue, and I would hope that we can have that as an agenda item request. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else online with a public announcement or agenda item request? All right, moving right along. Chatham Wells, per PFAS basically, and drinking water testing and pumping updates, Rob Failey.
Thank you, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. Good evening. Hope you're all well-rested. So, I just want to give a brief update on where we've been. Sorry. For the temporary treatment at Well Five, so Well Five is put back online for the summer season. Went back online April seventeenth. The permanent treatment facility, general contract bids were open on March twenty-eighth. Winston Builders Corporation was the apparent low bidder. Projected cost of fifteen million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. At the time of the writing of this report, bids were under review, but we are about to sign contracts at this point. We've actually scheduled a pre-construction meeting for next week. Mill Pond Wells, ten and eleven. Mass DEP inspected Wells, ten and eleven, and they gave approval to put them into service. Well eleven went online on April twenty-ninth. Well ten, we're holding off until we hear back from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the conservation easement. So, we, we are prepared to put that online. We just want to make sure all the legal loopholes are cleared before we do so. For the month of March, oops, I left that in there. Should be the month of April. Wells have been running four to ten hours a day. The water storage tanks did not hit the low level this month. Water sampling, bacteria samples were taken for the month of April and reported to DEP. All samples were free of bacteria, and quarterly samples were taken for secondary contaminants. Big redevelopment at Well Four. Maher Services completed the redeveloping of the well. It's been over ten years since that well was redeveloped, so they replaced a lot of, some defective parts and just got that ready. We shouldn't have any problems with it over the summer or for the next ten or so years as well. It's good to do work this time of year before the wells are all really active, so it was, it was good to take that offline for a period, but it's back up and running now. And the Tier Two report was updated to include Wells ten and eleven. So, this shows April two thousand twenty-three versus April two thousand twenty-four. We are right in line with our averages, other than some daily fluctuations. We are, we are basically the same as last year, which, I don't know, good or bad, but it is what it is. And this is just a, a chart to show the differences. I think some of the fluctuations, the April twenty-four is in the pink, and you can see some of those daily fluctuations are pretty high. I think that's probably due to flushing efforts of the hydrants. Again, just, just daily fluctuations, but the average is, is pretty consistent, and the bar chart at the bottom kind of tells you the same story.
Rob, did we flush at the same time last year?
Yes, we did.
Thanks.
This next chart, it's a little hard to see up on the screen, but it really shows Well Four was offline all month. We brought it back online on the thirtieth. You can see where South Chatham Wells, when they were working, we gave them some breaks, and we really relied on the Morton Road Plant, Wells six, seven, and nine, to take the load, and then kind of alternating between South Chatham Wells and Morton Road Wells. You also see, Well eleven came online on the twenty-ninth, and you see that starting to put towards our totals.
Eleven's still online, Rob?
Eleven is still online. It should remain online for a long time.
Super.
And now, and now four is back up and healthy and running again, too. So, so, we'll see it in the hours where, where it shows a discrepancy. But, so the pumping graph below is just shows the effort, the level of effort each well puts towards, you know, providing Chatham with its water. It's just in a bar chart, so it's, it's a little simpler to understand. Next page is the.
I'm sorry, Rob.
Yeah, sure.
Just, I've been struggling with this through several reports. Maybe you can give me a little tutorial on how to read the last column, seven-day pumpage totals. You know, when I look at any given number, what seven days am I looking at, is the question, in that column?
Well, I think that's just, well, yeah. No, that's a good question. I'm not.
Not just keeping with the dog.
Isn't it the seven, seven prior days in the, seven days prior in the previous column? If you, I think I did this mentally a while back, and I think that's what I got.
Yeah.
Well.
Drop one and game on.
Yeah, but, well, maybe that's it. I don't.
I think that's what it is.
I'll, I'll get some clarity on that, and maybe I'll change the heading so it's a little bit more, more descriptive.
Okay.
Because I'm not clear myself, to be honest with you.
Part of what got me started on this is I look at the twenty-one million. That clearly is not the sum of all those numbers.
Correct.
So, that's, that's what knocked me off, offline. Well, no, I, I, I mean, I, I just don't know how to read it, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what value that column is actually bringing.
I mean, it may have value. It's just, only if you know how to read it. So, thank you.
But otherwise, we love this chart. No, we do, honestly. It's great, it's great.
So, then it's just, the next chart is just the year-to-date pumping, the level of effort for every well for each month. Really shows how much we lie, rely on the South Chatham Wells. Excuse me. And then the same thing. It's just the pumping graph below that. It's just in a bar chart form. Now, for the USGS Observation Wells, the top one is Chatham. I checked it again this morning, just to see, because you can see, it looks like it was peaking and maybe starting that seasonal decline. It still looks like it's starting to level off or decline. If we get a heavy rain, you know, or many days of rain, that could spike again, but we're not, we're not out of the woods yet, but we are about, very similar to what we were last year at Chatham. But, on the bottom is Brewster, which is more of a tell, telling sign of what the water table is like, and that's kind of the bellwether that everybody uses. You can see, we climbed quite a bit higher than where we were last year, which is a good sign. So, we're higher than the last three average years. We'll just have to see how low that seasonal trough hits. But, that was also starting to crest and starting that decline. And so, unless we get more rain, I imagine the seasonal decline will And finally, is just our five-year comparison for the month of April. You can see, we are really right there with the average, but our hours of pumping are high, and that's because we had Well Four and a few of the other wells that were down for longer periods for maintenance. So, the wells were pumping longer hours. You know, the fewer wells that we're operating. But all wells are back online now, except for Well Ten. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Questions or comments from the board?
No? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Questions or comments for anyone online? No? All right. Yeah, we have an, Elaine, please go ahead.
I'm sorry. I must not have lowered my hand.
Oh, it's okay. All right. So, no questions? All right. Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I did something to the laptop here, so I'm not sure. Thank you.
All right. Since we only have three agenda items tonight, I'm going to keep things simple, and we're going to take public comment during the conversation of each item B, C, and D. Keep it nice and simple. So, again, once again, Item A, Article forty-seven was indefinitely postponed last night. We'll have a more comprehensive recap of town meeting, probably in the next meeting or two. So, we'll move on to Item B, considered use of town property for the third annual fireworks spectacular on Tuesday, July second, two thousand twenty-four, at Veterans Field. We have the Chatham Athletic Association Representative, Steve West. Good evening. Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm shocked to be up this quickly. I'm very happy for that, so thank you. I'm Steve West. I'm the Chatham Athletic Association President, and I'm here today representing our organization, as well as several other Chatham businesses, and ask for your approval to hold our third annual fireworks and related entertainment event at Veterans Field on Tuesday, July the second. Bit of a background, our Chatham team with the significant financial support from Chatham Bar Zen, the Chatham Chamber of Commerce and Merchants Association, as well as Mahi Gold and Cape Cod Five, plus We Hope, sponsors that came forward last year that we're still in negotiations with. Last year's sponsors included The Squire, Chatham Candy Manor, Chatham Cookware, Chatham Clothing Bar, Chatham Jewelers, Eastward Companies, Robert Paul, and Pine Acres. And we're reaching out to all of them and some other local businesses as well. Again, this year, we've even opened up our sponsorships to individuals and families if they would like to contribute to our, what we expect, and we'll be in other patriotic show in Chatham on July the second. This year's event's going to be essentially the same format and timetable as previous shows. We're using the same fireworks company that you guys are all familiar with, North Star Fireworks, that we've used for the last couple of years, and that I know the town uses and the First Night Committee uses for the First Night fireworks for the last decade or more. Fireworks are going to begin at dark, which we anticipate will be roughly around nine fifteen p.m. Fireworks are going to begin at dark, which we anticipate will be roughly around 9:15 PM. The show itself will last about 20 minutes. The viewing areas and barricades will be set up as they have been for all of the previous shows that take place at Veterans Field. And as far as endorsements, we recently received the endorsement from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Previously, we have received the fire and police recommenda- endorsements from Justin DiVano and Mike Anderson. Obviously, fire and police are going to coordinate with our organization as well as North Star Fireworks to ensure that the show goes on without a hitch safely as it has in prior years. Prior to the fireworks event, our our event, fireworks show, our event is going to begin at seven this year with children's activities such as face painting and balloon making. Balloons will not be helium balloons. And we probably are going to introduce some new children's games as well this year. Then around 8:00 PM, we're going to have the Jeff Low Band. You might recall the first two years we had Dan Clark, the Sing Trooper. This year, we're changing things up a little bit. We're going to have Jeff Low Band perform. They're going to do the same lively song medley set, patriotic songs that'll lead into our fireworks show. And of course, throughout the evening, we're going to have the concession stand open for drinks, non alcoholic drinks and and food at the at Veterans Field. Hope this is an event that you agree with as a great way to kick off the July 4 weekend. And if so, you'll approve our request to hold this third annual fireworks show on on Thursday, on Tuesday, July 2 at Veterans Field. That's all I got, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board? Shereen.
So it sounds like you're, it sounds like a fun event and it is. I mean, summer, everybody's writing.
Has been as long as the weather cooperates.
Had a couple of times it hasn't, I'm sure. It sounds like you're expanding a little bit, the programming.
Well, maybe the children's programming slightly. We haven't finalized it yet, but we might have some some other games.
Little extra, yeah.
Because we've had some long lines queuing up for the balloons and the face painters. So we were trying to come up with something else that they might enjoy.
Are they going to be tents set up at all for them? Are you anticipating more of a food need there than just the concession stand?
No, we think we can handle it.
You can handle it. Okay, good. All right, great. I'm fine with this. I think it's great.
I'm I'm just curious how you settled on Tuesday, July 2. I mean, a kind of a natural thought might be that it would be the third, but I'm curious.
We've never been able to hold it the night before the fourth because of the police needs to be at the parade on the fourth. And they have too many bodies. So to, I mean, they don't have enough manpower to cover an event on the third evening and then in the fourth morning. So.
Okay, thank you.
It's always been two days before.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Yeah, so there's any rain out date?
There is no rain out date. This is a one, one and done. And if if it doesn't go, then we we cancel by, you know, noonish, like we did a couple of years ago, and we push it back to next year.
What happens to the power technique company?
Well, we've we've long paid them, so they 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 have been very good in the past year that they'll just apply those monies to next year. We don't get them back, but they'll apply them to next year.
Super. Thanks, Steve. It looks great.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience in house? Any questions or comments from the online audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Shereen.
I move to approve the request to use Veterans Field for fireworks to play in associated programming on Tuesday, July 2, 2024.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dyken.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Thank you. And I want to also make one final announcement, I guess, is the town employee night, which you all will be invited to, is Wednesday, July the 10th. So thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, shellfish seasonal closures for May 15, 2024. Bucks Creek, June 1, 2024. Mill Creek, Taylor's Pond, Champlain Creek, Muddy Creek, July 1, 2024. Oyster Pond, Shellfish Constable Renee Gagne. Renee, you are online. Welcome.
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone, to the board and everyone. And my apologies to the clerk because this year we decided to do all of our seasonal closures in one night. So beginning with Bucks Creek on the 15th and then the the big amount on June 1st and finally, Oyster Pond on July 1st.
All right. Jeff, I'll ask for your assistance.
Sure. Thank you. Shellfish Rules and Regulations dated May 14, 2024, closed effective tomorrow, May 15, 2024. The Wadson Flats of Bucks Creek, north of a line across the mouth of the creek and east of a line across the mouth of Cockle Cove Creek, are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Select Board. I know Ron Bergstrom and David Wickham will be very upset. Ernie Eldridge as well. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, May 14, 2024, closed effective June 1, 2024. The Wadson Flats of Muddy Creek, southwest of a line drawn across the mouth of the creek as defined at low tide and northeast of the Route 28 Bridge are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Select Board. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, May 14, 2024, closed effective June 1, 2024. The Water and Flats of Mill Creek, north of a line drawn from the western breakwater to the eastern breakwater at the mouth of Mill Creek and south of a line drawn across the mouth of Taylor's Pond are closed to the taking of shellfish until further notice. Sign the Select Board. Shellfish Rules and Regs, May 14, 2024, closed effective June 1, 2024. The Water, Flats, and Altributaries of Champlain Creek, northwest of a line drawn from the outermost piling at the town boat ramp northeasterly to the no shellfishing sign on the marsh on the opposite shore, are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Select Board. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, May 14, 2024, closed effective June 1, 2024. The Wadson Flats of Taylor's Pond, north of a line drawn across the mouth of the pond, are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Select Board. And finally, Shellfish Rules and Regs, May 14, 2024, closed effective July 1, 2024. The Oyster Pond, east of a line from Kelly Landing to Long Point, is closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion on the board? Any comments from the in-house audience? Any comments from the online audience? See any names? All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. All those. There was not? My apologies.
Move approval of the closures.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for that.
All right. I have a comment.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be nice to get a visual at some point, just where the little locations are and what's closed. Just be nice to get a little visual for the public.
And hope that the no fishing or that that sign never moves, you know.
Yeah, I I know, but but just on paper, I'd like to see what north and northeast of these points are.
Maybe just a map.
Yeah, on a map. That's what I'm talking about.
We can do that. The Division of Marine Fisheries actually has a map for each of these closures and this is their description. So we can, we can add that next year.
Super. Thanks, Renee.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dyken.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Item D, Acceptance of Grant Award to the Town of Chatham for an Adult Supportive Day Program. We have our Director of Community Services, Leah Lacrosse, present. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Leah Lacrosse, Director, Community Services. Just gonna scroll through here. Mark is gonna scroll through for me. Sorry for the delay. It's not scrolling for me. Okay, perfect. I'm not going to read through this whole recommendation. I don't want to be the one that keeps you late tonight. But just as a background, following a resident's agenda item request presented to the Select Board at its February 7, 2024 meeting, the Council on Aging Division of Community Services Department submitted a grant proposal in the amount of $273,682 to the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs in order to fund startup and slash one year cost for an Adult Supportive Day Program at the Chatham Center for Active Living, beginning in the new fiscal year, July 1. On May 6, the town was notified that the grant had been awarded. I'm gonna just skip down because you have everything in front of you. But I wanted to just make the recommendation. I I recommend that the town approve the acceptance of this. The grant funds in the amount of $273,682 for an Adult Supportive Day Program at the Chatham Center for Active Living.
Questions or comments from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I just had, I think I just had one question. There was a line in your staff memo which talked about, I'm trying to find it, that basically talked about going out and soliciting confirmation from people who are using Orleans, what their wishes would be, as I read it, about changing over to Chatham. And I just wondered, it it left me with the impression that that somehow would would determine our going forward with the program. And and if that's true, I guess that's question one. And question two is, are you going to make any effort to reach out to people who might be candidates that are not presently using Orleans? That might be candidates that that would be interested in using Chatham going forward?
Both are excellent questions and I appreciate the opportunity to answer them. I did get in touch with Judy, who is the the Director of the Chatham, of the Orleans Council on Aging. I did let her know that we got the grant. And she and I are, you know, very well aware of the the fact that these people who who are currently in her program or really in any day program are, can be in a fragile state and that a transition like that might be detrimental to them. So we are, we're trying to set up a meeting right now, I think, for the end of next week to discuss what a transition would look like. I think her, her Chatham families are already asking questions. Some are asking if they have to go. Some are asking, you know, how do I make that transfer over? And we want to be as sensitive as possible. And that's why Judy and I are going to put those plans into place together if you accept the grant tonight. We we want to work together to make it as seamless as a transition. It it may be, it may be that none of them come over because of their, you know, it it's a huge transition when they're used to their day program there. But I am highly confident from what we're seeing at the COA right now that there is enough demand that even if not one of them came over, we could still fill our program.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer your second question, yes, we would do marketing to advertise for for new clients.
Just a quick follow up. So you're you're, one way or the other, you're pretty confident that you you will have enough interest to justify going forward and and not have to maybe put it over a year or postpone it or whatever.
I I don't think we'll have to postpone it at all. The only thing that I could foresee would cause a postponement is not being able to recruit staff, but I'm hoping that that's not the case.
Thank you.
Shereen.
And the, thanks, Leah. Thank you for the presentation. Very excited to see this in Chatham. Are you anticipating the program will start July 1?
No, it's, when I prepared the grant, I had to do a submit a whole operations plan. And we we actually have until March of 2025.
Oh, great.
To open the program, which is good staffing wise. But right now, as you may or may not know, in order as a new startup, I had to have a COA that currently has a day program sponsor us in our application. And Dennis agreed to do so, so they will be assisting in putting together, you know, everything from job descriptions to care plans to all of that.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super excited. Congratulations. Great job. Big win.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Dean.
Yeah, I have a few questions and then a comment. So you you would anticipate you don't have to actually start the program until March of 2025? As I'm looking at the grant letter, it says, as a reminder, all grant spending must be completed between the contract execution date and March 31, 2025.
Correct. But I could hire the staff in advance if I had to. I mean, what I have in my operations plan, I'm targeting, targeting between September of 24 and December of 24 to open the program. That's that's my own target.
You say in your memo, acceptance of this grant would necessitate future year budget funding appropriations for staffing to provide this program. The amount of funding will needed in future years will be a lesser amount than the startup grant award. So I know that, I I don't know whether you told this to me in a private conversation or I think you said it publicly. When the, when the Select Board decided to put the article that was not moved last night on the warrant, that the reason for the request for funding from for town, from town meeting was to make it possible or easier for you to hire staff because it would be difficult to hire staff for for just a one year program. Is that?
It would be, it would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to or to be able to recruit staff if I said this was a one year program. Not impossible, but it it would certainly turn a lot of qualified applicants away if they thought their job was only for one year. It does decrease in following years because it is, you know, included in this startup cost is furnishings, all new furnishings that are tailored towards those with dementia and dementia related illnesses, door alarms, technology, the actual recruitment of the staff. I I included absolutely everything in this grant. And going forward, it would be just staffing and supply costs. But some of those costs would be offset by the charge that they would pay to come to the program.
And this is planned to take place in the main event room at 193 Stony Hill Road.
That's correct.
Which is, how many days a week is that currently used?
So another great question. I sat down extensive, well, spent an extensive amount of time with Anna, our program coordinator. And we looked at all the programs in the past few months. We, Mondays and Fridays, we have very little programming in there, in the dining room, I should say. There in other parts of the building. And we just, we sat there and we kind of looked at a grid about how we could move programs around. And if we moved those programs around, it would have very little disruption. We would just kind of change the days of some of the programs in our. Our programs are pretty random anyway, except for like our coffee series is always the same time of the month. There are certain programs that are the same time every month. But for most of them, we can, we can rearrange them and kind of play Tetris a little bit and move them. And if they're, if that wasn't the case, then, you know, some of the more benign programs, like say Bingo or something like that, could be moved to the community center.
Are there any programs that are currently taking place there that you are going to displace to the community center?
No.
Okay. Are there any potential programs that would be negatively impacted by the encumbrance of this room two days a week? In terms of future programming possibilities?
Bless you, Shereen. No, not not that I can think of there. I I anticipate there will be some disruption. There'll be some growing pains. We are in a very tight space, for sure, our building. But we do have, we are using the media lounge upstairs much more often now for programs. And a lot of people are preferring the upstairs media lounge. So we could, you know, Anna and I talked at length about this, about moving some of the programs that are in the dining room when there's nobody upstairs, that they could easily be moved upstairs.
Do you see this program as potentially negatively impacting any future plans for the building? As you heard me talk about the feasibility study that. the feasibility study that Mr. Raybor's firm did? If in fact, the town were to seriously move forward in that direction, one way or another, whatever option might be taken? And, and I know, I think all the options he had included an adult daycare room in that building, one way or another.
Correct.
Not necessarily this room.
Exactly.
Do you see the ongoing conduct of this program as negatively impacting that process?
It will not be ideal, for sure. Negatively impacting, I don't think so. Because I think that if we get moved as staff, in speaking with Mr. Raybor, you know, he assures me that things could be walled off, construction, you know, where they can work on one part of the building and we can, at least the office staff could be in another. That wouldn't be ideal. I think that we, if we were to have to move space somewhere, I would make every effort to make sure that that program is replicated wherever we are.
As you know, I was the negative vote on this, putting this on the warrant and had the finance committee, where several members expressed some reservations as mine. I had two, two reservations in particular. One was, I did not support the funding article because I felt this should be funded with state, with a state grant. And number two, I was concerned about disruption and displacement of programs for the one room that is used for your, your main events. And I'm not quite sure still how I would, I'm gonna vote on this tonight. I don't like voting no on taking money from, receiving money from the state for a whole lot of reasons. But I'll defer a determination on that until a motion is brought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quick question. One, I just wanna, I appreciate the fact of whether to be sensitive to the outreach for those who are using the Orleans program at the moment. I would, I would expect it to be kind of a hard decision to make that transition because there's familiarity with the Orleans program. And a transition to a new program may or may not be to the benefit of the individual. So, I know we're gonna be sensitive to that. And it appears that there is enough need that we're gonna have to have a, well, we'll be able to participate in the program, even if there is a low transition of Orleans users at the moment. You mentioned also too, that we needed a sponsor for this, and Dennis has agreed to be our sponsor. Can you just give us a little, for the viewing public too, exactly what that means to this process?
It, honestly, it doesn't mean a whole lot. It was just that, basically, Dennis had to write a letter of recommendation saying that they fully support us going for this grant. And basically, that they had the confidence in our leadership and our ability to provide these services. It also means that Brenda Vasquez, who has the, she is the Director of the Dennis COA. She's spoken here before. She has a wealth of knowledge and experience. And she will kind of mentor us through this process of opening. So, she's agreed to help us with everything from forms to, like I said, job descriptions and, you know, best practice, that sort of thing. It's actually very helpful to me. But as far as, there's no requirements really of her.
Okay. I had a follow, I'm sorry. I just really wanted to clarify for the benefit of the public, because I know the answer to this question. This process, this proposal and project initiated at the request of a former member of the Council on Aging Board. It did not initiate with you.
Correct.
It did not initiate with the Council on Aging Board. They did hear the presentation. And the initial thought was that it was going to take place at the Methodist Church, which showed some considerable promise. I visited there with you. I think Mr. Shell visited there a few times. And then, upon further evaluation, you made very clear that the only practical way to do this is to have it on-site, where you as Director can oversee it personally. And that's, that's very understandable. But I do, just want the folks out there to understand how, how this happened. You are to be commended for applying for the grant, as you did. You did what you asked to do, and, and for successfully receiving the grant. I just really wanted to get that on, on the record, out on the record. Thank you, Ms. Shereen.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions or comments from the board at this moment? Any questions or comments from the in-house audience? Any, any questions from the online audience?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Gibbs has a comment.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure how you can accept the grant award based solely on the May 8th letter. Missing from the package, which I had requested be included so they could all be, all the documents could be in one place for the record, was the grant application, the award letter, the memorandums of understanding with Orleans for the current year and the one beginning July 1. And most importantly, the grant agreement with the terms and conditions for that grant, which has to be executed, I believe, by the Select Board within 10 days of the award letter, which is the day after tomorrow. Some of my comments are similar to Mr. Nocastro's. I continue to have serious concerns about disrupting Chatham residents who currently attend Orleans or accepting new clients at this time. First, I, this grant is for, assumes 15 participants in Chatham. First, I don't know how it's feasible to safely have an additional 15 people with special needs using the multipurpose room two days a week with sufficient specialized programming in the existing space. But most importantly, dementia patients struggle to adapt to any changes in their environment. It's part, it's a natural part of the disease. By creating an environment of familiar routines, activities, and even a floor plan, it allows them to feel comfortable, safe, and calm. Consistency of a fam, of a familiar environment, faces of staff that are recognizable, and routine activities is crucial to providing a sense of security for them. Disruptions and change in routine causes stress and anxiety, making dementia worse and more difficult for both the client and the caregivers. Integration into a new environment with all new surroundings and faces can be nothing less than traumatic. In my opinion, it's premature and would be frankly irresponsible to start a program in Chatham, including hiring staff and buying furniture based on the conditions of the grant, not knowing if the Chatham Council on Aging is going to be renovated. Should that occur, the program, I believe, would necessarily have to be suspended during the period of renovation, for both safety and the negative impact on clients. I can't imagine it, it would be anything less than traumatic for them to be in an environment where construction and banging and all kinds of things are going on in the next room. I don't think any decision should be made until we decide if that renovation's going to take place. If you were to institute a program now, what happens to those clients? Some who may have come from Orleans and been there for five years, or, and have, have left to say, no, we wanna be here, with no place to go? I can't reconcile how anyone can think it's a good idea or in the best interests of either the client or their caregivers to change the environment with so many unknowns. This isn't just a box to be checked off as a task completed. I understand the need for it. But there are consequences to these decisions. And I think there's an order of operations that have to be considered. I haven't seen the terms of compliance in the grant agreement, which is due Thursday. But based on the award letter, it suggests that if staff is hired, furniture bought, with the grant money, and Chatham is unable to have a program that continues with 15 people, that those expended funds would likely have to be returned to the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. At minimum, I think any hiring should be postponed until there is a decision about the next steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any additional hands online?
Mr. Chairman, Pat Burke?
Pat, please go ahead.
I would put my video on, but I was out gardening, so I will spare you that. I would like to say a couple of things. First, I would like to commend Leah for all of the hard work she did in obtaining this grant. I was initially 100% on board, and then I was a skeptic. And working with Leah all the time, she's brought me around. A couple of things I would like to address. I spend an inordinate amount of time at the Chatham Center for Active Living. And I'm not sure if any of you or Ms. Gibbs has ever been there when the Alzheimer's Support Group has shown up, but I have. And there's a large amount of people that come in to that Alzheimer's Support Group that we fit into the media lounge that have tremendous needs. I can't tell you about, about the amount of people I have talked to personally that have said to me, oh my goodness, if we just had this here. Now, going forward, I do not think that we're going to take people from Orleans. I think we have members of our own community that are not going to Orleans that would gravitate towards this supportive adult day health in order for them to be able to have a few hours of time to themselves. I mean, what, you, you really have to dig deep into thinking about what your life is like as a caregiver of someone who, who suffers from one of these dementia programs. There are always, always, things that can go wrong. There are always, you know, let's put it off until this happens, and let's put it off until that happens. But as you all know, we've been putting off the building at 193 Stony Hill for as long as I've been on this board, waiting for something to happen, and nothing has happened. And I, I really think Leah has, has been able to really turn around the Chatham Center for Active Living and make it a place people wanna come to, regardless of what the building looks like. So, I would like to support her. And I would like to support her in, in moving forward with this grant. And, and I think you should support her, and I will help her. She knows I will help her as much as she can, as I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional? All right, back to the board. Mike?
Yeah, I just like, I'm sorry, you can go ahead and move.
No, no, go ahead.
Just one second here. I, I just wanna say a couple of things. First of all, thanks to Pat Burke for those comments. I really, really appreciate them. They give me additional confidence. Number two, I wanna say that, that the, we have seen Ms. Vasquez, Brenda Vasquez, who runs the, the Dennis COA program. She is very impressive. She is very knowledgeable. She's very capable. And I take additional comfort from the fact that she's recommended our proposed program for commencement, if you will, and that she will be available to help us get it up and running, as I understand Leah's comments. And finally, the Bureau of Elder Affairs, if that's the appropriate name of the, of the organization, has given us a grant of $274,000-plus. I mean, that is an expression of confidence and expertise that I think we would be frankly crazy not to accept. So, I, I'm gonna, I'll let you move it, Jeff, but I strongly support this.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. And I echo your comments. Again, I was very brief in my praise of Leah for her good work here in securing this grant. I live in this world, and these grants are not easy to get. And to turn our backs on $274,000 would be a foolish act, I think, on the, on the part of this board. That being said, I also recognize and understand the, the carefulness, the thoughtfulness that goes into the development of this kind of a program. And I was heartened to hear that Ms. Vasquez is involved. And also that Pat Burke came in this evening with strong vocal support. And she wasn't on board to begin with, and she is now. So, I am pleased to move this forward. And I recommend that the town approve the acceptance of the grant funds in the amount of $273,682 for an Adult Supportive Day program at the Chatham Center for Active Living.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I do wanna say, I, I'm just gonna echo what, what Jeff said. I mean, I think you've addressed the issue around the transition with the, or, you know, between any potential clients, you know, and addressing the, the, being sensitive about that, the concerns that, that a citizen had about, you know, the transition that was going on. You addressed that before she spoke, and I, 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 that's great. The, the, the grant process for the Commonwealth is, is, it's not easy. I've gone through it myself. And I, and I'm just gonna echo what, what both Mike and Jeff said, that I applaud you for winning an award. It's, it's, it's a major award. And it just takes, it takes a lot, and it's a lot of money. And this, the state just doesn't dump it on, on a town and says, go ahead and run with it. You have to prove your, your value, what your needs are, and what you're gonna do with it. I mean, it's, 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 and there are benchmarks along the way in reporting that are necessary for that organization or that agency to be able to define the next grant for the next, next round of fiscal year. So, thank you, Leah, and I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. I appreciate very much what Pat Burke had to say. Pat and I have had multiple conversations about this, as Leah and I have had. The two concerns that I expressed earlier, one was dispensed with last night, with the non-motion on, on that particular article. Leah, you have, you've explained to my satisfaction the issue of displacement that I, that I was concerned about. I do, I do think it's going to present some complications. But I, I feel very confident that if anyone can make this work, it's going to be you. You put together an application in just a few days. I remember that, and I saw the application. So, on balance, I am going to vote yes. And I hope it's a very successful program, and we'll see what the pilot shows. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we have a motion. We have a second unless there's further discussion. All those in favor, Select Board Member Nocastro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it.
I'm obtaining one last motion of the evening.
I move that we adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Nocastro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you.